Fired up, Mr. Boris, Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Pop.
Here.
Ms. Winhar.
Present.
Ms. Nichols. Mr. Slocum.
Here.
Mr. Rocco.
Here.
Mr. Talbot.
Here.
We do have a form of attempts present.
I'd like to be super proud of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Michael.
Hi.
I thought you were in the room, I apologize.
No, no, I had to get some water.
Which is fine.
Looking for the first presenter, but he's not here.
Well.
If it's okay with you, we were gonna do building, fire, and police in that order.
Okay.
Simply because of some time issues with some of the firefighters.
Certainly.
Since the building inspector is not here.
Well, we'll start with the fire.
We'll start with the fire, is that okay?
I'd also like to-
We'll burn down the building.
Make sure we start with some introductions, you know.
Yeah.
If you all come around the table, feel free to introduce.
Want everybody to sit?
Yeah, let everyone in the department sit. I'd appreciate it. I think we'd all appreciate it.
Yeah, and there's chairs.
We have room.
Do you want to shower?
It's on camera.
No, we actually did.
Yeah.
We can come down here.
We can look at some chairs.
It's disbeneficial for everybody.
Yeah.
We have extra budgets if anybody wants a budget to look at. Oh, there you are. It's okay, we're already here. We were gonna start with you, but they're in the seats, so we're gonna start with them.
They're in the seats, they're gonna warm it up. Where your opening act. So I thought, for those sitting at the table, our guests per se, staff, if you want to just introduce, just reintroduce, and then we'll- I don't recognize you, that's one of my causes. Okay, great, volunteer.
Assistant Chief Dan Ford, also volunteer.
Fire Marshal John Andrews.
Fire Chief Jack Hudson.
Deputy Chief.
Oh, I know that a lot of-
All right, just for the record, for clarification purposes, what are the chiefs of? Because I get confused on this all the time.
What are the chiefs of?
Don's like the chief of-
Fire chief and a fire-
Both and deputy fire marshal.
Right.
And your deputy.
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 And president of the corporation.
And president of the corporation, all right, so you've got three hats you're wearing.
And you're his-
Treasure company.
Assistant.
Father's chief.
And you are-
I'm an assistant.
You're a-
Fire chief or fire marshal?
She- fire chief. So Rick and I are equals, we have different responsibilities. My responsibilities entail fleet maintenance, Rick is in charge of training and all the OSHA-related accoutrements that go along with that, including membership, et cetera.
Good. Happy to have you at your table.
Thank you.
So anyway, doesn't make it any easier on us, you know.
That's very interesting.
If you wanna pipe in, we want you to.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Michael, do you have any introductions, or can they explain their budgets?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, just a couple of things, and then I know that there's a lot of information that they've assembled, that they wanna present.
Okay.
And, just a couple of quick things. If you look at page 103, I'm just gonna deal with the numbers quickly, and then go get into the, some of the operational issues and challenges. You can see that, how much the budget's going up by. A couple of things that I just wanted to point out. On the non-salary side, a lot of what is happening there is driven by vehicle and equipment needs. As Jack has explained to me, while the trucks are new, they have to have more frequent maintenance reviews and so on, so between the equipment maintenance and the equipment supplies, I think there's a $10,000 increase, and it's really just to reflect what's happening in those accounts, because they continue to go up. And then, about $7,500 of this increase is as a result of an increase in their pension contribution. And then, in the salary part of this budget, I'm sorry, yeah, in the non-salary side of the budget, another $7,000 is being recommended by me, to increase the paper call from $5 to $5.50. It hasn't been increased since January of 2013. Part of the reason why we had an increase in it is because we had put together a staffing study of the fire department, that I think was issued in December '14, and the hope was that there would be some resolution to that in the interim, and because there hasn't been, we decided rather than continuing to wait, they're deserving of this, and it would've happened a couple of years ago, not for the fact that the staffing analysis got delayed, and now what we've decided to do, go back, revisit it, and modify it, so Jack will have something for you, maybe before I leave, after I leave, I don't know, but to try to characterize what we think the department's gonna need going forward to sustain itself, because the problem of attracting volunteers continues to be very challenging, we just don't have the people. When you look at our demographics, we've seen that age group of 20 to 40 decline by what was 22, 24 percent, so the people just aren't there. And then, the nature of people's lives now is so different, that volunteering is not what it used to be 15, 20, 25 years ago, but that's for another day. So, a lot of this stuff on the non-salary side is pretty much driven by the requirements of the maintenance, pension costs, my recommendation for the paper call increase. And the other thing is, if not for the $3,000 that we budgeted for the light enforcement officer here, the salary account probably would've only gone up by just over $10,000, or about 2.2 percent, so when you look at it from that perspective, it's really a maintenance budget. The one thing I wanted to say, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Jack, and to John, is the one thing that we're seeing here, and we're seeing in the building department, is an incredible increase in the demand for inspections, and the complexity of those inspections because of the complexity of the code. John showed me today just one set of plans that he has to review, which only represent one of four, that he has to review on one building. And, the same thing is happening in the building department, which is why there's a request there for reclassification of the position. So in spite of a lot of automation going on in both departments, the demand for the reviews and the complexity of these inspections is really taking up a lot of their time. The other thing that I just wanna emphasize, and I know they will, is their first and foremost duty is to respond to a fire. John, Jack, Don, and Mike Kazlowski are basically the core of our fire response team during the day, but they're not paid for that. He's the fire marshal, he's the deputy fire marshal, and is basically the deputy fire chief. He's the fire chief, and Mike is the fire inspector, fire marshal, I'm sorry, deputy fire marshal. And every one of their days is taken up responding to fires. So, while they might be in the budget for 35 or 40 hours, they're not able to devote 35 or 40 hours to the job description that they have, because they are our core firefighting service. So, that takes an awful lot of time away from a lot of these things that are growing in complexity. So, with that, I will stop, I'll let Jack take it from here. They put together some decision packages based on some things that we had discussed. They have some really thoughtful and significant ideas for the potential for some additional revenue, and also some explanations as to why we need to preserve what we have, especially with the fire.
Pete, you had something before Jack started?
Yeah, Mike, before the chief starts, can you talk about on 105, 50, 107, the salary adjustment, and why we appropriated the 16, and why it's back down to-
Yeah. Last year at this time, we hadn't settled the contract with the town hall union. We settled it in May, so when this budget was adopted, we had to put an estimate of two years of salary adjustments, okay?
Okay.
In there, and that's very observant of you, because I looked at the same thing and didn't understand what was happening. So, just to give you an example, Peter, and not to marathon, but-
Can you tell me what mine is, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's 50, 107. 50, 107, it went from 15, 997 to 5136, because what we did there, because we didn't have a settled contract, we had two years' worth of salary adjustments for all of the union people in there. And, that's why you see also, Peter, this distortion in, well, let me show you. The deputy fire marshals, okay, last year were budgeted at 81, 910, because that was their salary as of two years ago, and they're now at 87, 838. Okay, so both of them, that represents about a $6,000 difference over two years. And so that money was in 5107.
Okay.
Okay, to then get distributed back to the salary account, once there was a settlement, and it also affected the administrative assistance position as well. And so that's why, but if you look at the dollars total, or all the salary accounts, you see that it's a $13,329 increase, because it sort of levels out, once you look at the aggregate of all of the salary accounts, but it's the fact that we had to put all that money in 5107, and then it got distributed up into the permanent full-time salary. And actually, as I said, you back out the 3,000 for the town manager adjustment, which is if the ordinance gets approved, and the building, the enforcement officer gets approved, it's really about a $10,000 increase, or about 2.23 percent from budget to budget.
Thank you. Okay, Jack.
Okay. Before we get into the decision-making packages, I wanna just jump into the other book that Michael had, in his presentation of the budget, he wrote a several-page article. One of the things he mentions in his opinion there is that we collectively, police and us, had wanted to add additional dispatchers. And I think it's worthy of discussion, because we've had some significant issues, and that's why I asked these guys to be here to be part of this discussion, that the staffing levels, we feel at times compromises, are their ability to respond to us timely. It's not that they don't want to, but if you've ever sat in there or listened to a tape, there's just too much for one person to do, and sometimes too much for two people to do. And we feel that, you know, we would like, I personally, and these guys would agree with me, I would assume, would like to see those positions restored, because of the potential that's there for us to not get proper service by one dispatcher, or a police officer or dispatcher.
Not to cut your off, but I get about five pages of that with the police department.
Okay.
I'd like you to stay, if you could, and that's really gonna be a big part of Neil's presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, not that they didn't want you to, but yeah, he has some charts, and also pretty extensive justification, which I'm sorry you didn't see before the meeting.
Okay, good. What I'd like to do is, John, if you're ready to go, I think that's-
Certainly.
I think John's part-time inspector is important, and I'd like to give him ample time to address his concerns.
And let me explain why the sensitivity of this. I asked the departments to look at areas where I thought maybe we could cut additional dollars, and because of the fact that we had barely funded this in the past, I mistakenly thought that we might be able to cut this even further. And I thought that, given the fact that the council had provided supplemental money the last couple of years, that maybe we had caught up on the backlog that resulted from the unfortunate death of the former fire marshal, and the fact that for about a year, we were not doing inspections.
We were doing, just not-
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, we were down a lot of people. But, as I've learned more and more, this is becoming more and more of an issue, and that the $20,000 is critical, and possibly it's taken out of-
Is that a complexity issue, or just a backlog, or that's still, it's both?
Well, since 2004, we've had the same, we've had 5.14 staff numbers.
Okay.
So, if you look at what we've done as far as town expansion, demand, what our role has become now is totally different than what it was in '04, from emergency management to preparation for storms, to shelter preparations, to, we do a much better job at that now, but it comes at a cost of, you know, what we have to do, our reporting requirements, Don spends a fair amount of his time just doing the mandatory daily state reports, every time we go out to a call, we have to file that with the state. There's just mandates out there that we don't have a choice to meet, and we collectively, the assistant chiefs, the fire marshal's office, and myself have absorbed these, to the point where that, you know, the fire marshals probably spend 50% of their time actually able to be out in the field. Yesterday, we had a crash on 84, all three of our full-time employees were sitting on 84 for two hours, and so that's time that they're not doing inspections, that's not, you know, they're not, they're not career firefighters, if you will, but they do respond. And without them, they were the only three that were there, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe there was one other, but a lot of times during the day, between 6:00 and 6:00, we're in, you know, and it's not, people don't, you know, Heinz doesn't close down, and the guys run across the street like they did back in the 40s and the 50s, you know, the core, like Michael said, the core that we draw from just isn't there.
And John does an excellent job of detailing this, and he'll show you on his decision package, yeah?
Tell us any pages, or sort of-
I think it's the-
Page five versus five.
It starts at page five on the-
Okay.
Of the knee-high. Yeah.
When I first started here, I did ask for a part-time, more money for a part-time employee, it started out, I think, $7,000 a year, to kind of put us on a road towards just getting close to complying with the state mandated inspection reports. Over the last two years, I've asked for more, because we have a part-time employee, that I try to use at least 16 hours a week, average, some weeks there's none, but everything to do. And, when I sat down with Michael and had this conversation, I kind of got under the impression that the actual work that is required in our office for the fire marshal side is not understood. So, going from the decision package, I attached multiple pages, some bullet points, that just kind of show what requirements that we have to meet. And the first, first page, which is page number six, is probably the most telling tale here, if you can look at it, and it's the page that shows Group A, Group B, Group C. These are state mandated requirements for inspections. So everything that falls under Group A is a yearly inspection. Every year, this list of occupancies has to be inspected, and as you go through Group B, every two years, that's what needs to be done. But on top of that, everything that was due in Group A has to be done again. So there are a number of inspections that are required. Over the past years, simply because, as we've already discussed here, we have a full-time deputy fire marshal who spends the majority of his time doing fire department-related activities. I have another deputy fire marshal who comes in in the morning, his workday starts at 6:30 in the morning, because he's covering that critical time from, as the chief said, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., where our volunteer staffing is getting ready for work and going to work. In the fire marshal's office, we cannot start inspections until 9:00 a.m. So by the time we start our inspections, his day is half-done, and he's been in there for, now, quite paperwork and such, but he's there for the fire department. So the two full-time deputies that are in the fire marshal's office spend a majority of their time doing fire department-related activities, which takes away from the requiredness of this. And this is just one small part. This is not an office that we respond to fire calls during the day, and we do a couple of inspections. As you continue through this packet, there's another list of stuff that we are responsible to do, and anybody that has anything to do with construction work or anything knows that you have plan reviews that need to be submitted, plan reviews have to be done. Myself and the building official Keith, we spend countless hours going over plan reviews. And each time we look at a plan review, that requires a site visit. I put in an example here of one project that was quite involved, it's the new trampoline park that's over on West Johnson Avenue. Now that's an existing building with an existing fire alarm system, and an existing sprinkler system, and just roughly putting together, that's just the plan reviews to get that place over, and we put in over 45 man-hours into that building, between plan reviews, site visits, inspections, testing of the systems and everything like that, and a lot of times, a lot of the things that we do require two people. Fire alarm inspections, because you need somebody to look at the panel while another person's out testing and doing their things. So, all of that being said, what helps our office get through what's required is that part-time employee. Because that part-time employee, although he is a volunteer firefighter in this town, he is not pulled off inspections for smoke from cooking at Neil Park. So when we're jumping in the engines and we're responding to that call, he stays in the field, he continues with his inspections. Now certainly, he's available to us if we have a serious fall, or if we have a large structural fire or something serious, and we need manpower, you know, public safety's number one. But while I'm being pulled away from an inspection, he can go continue. That money is down to $20,000, it's already been put, I think originally we asked for 30. What needs to be understood is that part-time employee is what's keeping our numbers of required inspections at its head. We're not even at the top level, or we're supposed to be. But we can handle a lot of what needs to be done with that part-time employee. And again, he is a dedicated member of the fire marshal's office, just strictly doing fire marshal-related stuff. So this guy's going out in the morning, and I'll use today, I'm sorry, yesterday, as an example, and another day next week that he's scheduled to work, he's doing the Maple Grove Plaza. A lot of occupancies in the Maple Grove Plaza, it's a multi-day inspection process that he's going and doing that. So while if one of myself or deputy fire marshal, the unquiesced was out there doing that, and the tones go up, we're running out and leaving that property only, that we're there doing our inspection with, standing there by themselves while we're going out to do an emergency call. With the part-time employee, he stays there, and he continues his inspection, or if I'm doing it, I can call him and say, "I gotta run, can you come over?" And then he comes over and does it. So having him in the field and having him available, even, I'd love to have him for 24 hours a week, with the $20,000, it's barely, well, we're already over budget.
Yeah.
I already have to tell him to stop working, which means a majority of the work that he does is gonna stop, until we can get him back. And, so the $20,000 isn't really enough, and it's not a question of catching up, we definitely have to catch up. The majority of the inspections that are required have not been done, and we need to catch up, but we also need to continue. And as you can see, as you go through here, this list, inspections are just a small part of what our office does in the fire marshal side. There is public education, there's students coming through our buildings, it's us going in and doing presentations in schools and daycare centers. We also have a program where we go out into the community and assist elderly and disabled community members with installing and testing and changing batteries in their smoke alarms. Takes a lot of time. You go into somebody's house to, even if you're going in to just change out some batteries and, you know, a couple of new smoke detectors and a CO detector, you can be in there for an hour. You know, we start talking, and you're being polite, and you're explaining how to use and stuff, you can be in there for longer than that. You know, all of these things take time. The only way to continue doing what we do for this community is to have the mainpowers to do it. And, so cutting any more of what's already been cut, we're already hurting, we're already behind the eight ball with what cuts have already been created. To take any more cuts from this, the services are not going to take place. It's the fire and life safety inspection, but also just to look at customer service. If you're a contractor and you're waiting for me to come out to do a fire alarm inspection for you, and you're waiting for me, but I'm sitting on 84 with a rolled-over car, it's not good customer service. And I don't like to not provide you customer service, that's what we're here for, is to give you customer service. So, all of that being said, I don't need to go into the details, but, you know, because it's in here, and this is certainly an abbreviated list of the things that are accomplished, and it's the stuff that needs to be accomplished just on the fire marshal side. We're not even putting into what all of us do every day as firefighters, responding to emergency situations, and all the other community service things that need to be done, school drills and that were involved.
And that's a significant amount of-
That's a significant-
Eight schools, at least one drill a month.
And that's also-
We're there, and we're doing all the follow-up reporting, we're reporting to the board of Edward.
And the private schools, and St. Bridgetts, and all the other, and all the other stuff that has to be done. That's a significant amount of time that is taken out in the process of that.
You said 33 events, monthly drills, annually 33 events.
On a day-to-day basis, I know you give us all a report once a month, but on a day-to-day basis, how often would you say our regular paid staff, yourself included, are interrupting a day? I mean, you know, is it like-
Probably 900 divided, well, not 900.
Seriously, I'm looking for that.
Now, I understand. No, just in call, are you talking with everything?
Yeah, where you just had to put down your-
Well, we're on course to probably be close to 1,000 calls a year, or so, 1,000 divided by-
So it's a three-day.
Yeah, but that's in a 24-hour period. There are days when we won't have a call between 6:00 and 5:00. But there are days that we spend eight hours of the day at the scene of a fire, the next day has an investigation, at least three times a day, usually by emergencies or something related to emergency response. And that can be a 15-minute call and just stop, just change a battery in a smoke detector, or it can be, you know, a two-hour call, or mutually during the day, Sullington calls us for mutually. We send, we'll send the full-time staff there to sit in the firehouse for three hours to protect their town while they're fighting the fire. You know, we're paying them to be there, but we do the same thing next week if we have a fire, so it's kind of one hand washing the other.
Okay. Mind the question about the decision package, page five. We're talking $20,000, now that, is that, are they justifying an existing expense?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
So I've heard, I've heard 30,000, he asked for 30.
Yeah, they did.
And that was your preliminary.
I requested 30, you cut it back.
Okay.
To 20.
Or 20, I'm sorry.
But it was 20.
It was.
It was 20.
So you're looking for a pump-up, basically.
But we're certainly here to make sure that we don't reduce it any lower, and obviously, you know, John would like to see more money if possible.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the appropriate note on page five, that the ask was for 30.
The ask was for 30, and I reduced it to 20.
Right.
And they're defending the 20 with the understanding that they could use much more than the 20. And then correspondingly, John provided us on page two with some potential revenues that could be generated, not just simply to address this issue, but because just standing alone, this makes good sense, because most other towns are doing it, and we're not. And I'll let him explain, you know, what his recommendation is on establishing a user package.
At the request of Michael, I put down together some very preliminary numbers here. These are by no means etched in stone. Basically what I did is I went to all the surrounding towns, Virginia, Camden, Orange, kind of reached out to other towns that have similar sizes to us, and I took their fee schedule for plan reviews. I'll start with plan reviews. So plan reviews can range anywhere from a small, you're putting up a wall, you know, if you wanted to put a wall across here. So a plan review like that for most places are charging $25. Now it can go up to, if you've got a 75,000 square foot building, the fee for that plan review could be $1,000. So I kind of took the average, and then I got together with Keith in the building department, and kind of took what the averages over the last three years of what we've done for plan reviews, and kind of took that average. So the numbers that you're showing here for plan review revenue is truly a average of cost charged with these, and an average of the amount of inspections that, or plan reviews that we've done. The other numbers for inspections, so it's a little more solid, because it's easier for me to know how many inspections that I do. And what a lot of other towns have done is for licensing inspections is a perfect example. Anyplace that has a liquor license, restaurants, bars, private clubs, whatever it is, if they serve liquor, they have a license from the state. There's a requirement by the state that every year for them to renew their licenses, I'm required to go into their facility, do a fire and life safety inspection, pass them, or fail them, or have them, you know, violations, whatever needs to be corrected. And, right now, they get it for free. A lot of towns charge 25, 35 dollars, or whatever amount that they've decided on. If they're in their town, all daycare centers, anyplace that receives a license from the state, we could charge a fee for that inspection. Subsequent, if we have to go back, because a lot of these inspections aren't just walk-in, 10 minutes, walk out, you're done, they could be walking in, you're spending 45 minutes doing a restaurant, but you come up with four or five violations, because each one of those is another inspection that you have to go back. A lot of towns, what they'll do is, when we go into, and I'll use a Subway store, you know, we've got a Subway shop here, there's no requirement for them to have licensing, they don't have liquor license, but they still are required inspections, and we just do cold inspections. It's basically what the part-time inspector has been doing, is cold inspection, just walks into a business, introduces himself, explains to why he is there, and then proceeds with the inspection. Most towns don't charge for that initial inspection, because we're kind of just walking in on the street, it seems a little unfair to a business owner to do that. Most towns don't charge for that initial inspection because we're kind of just walking around the street. It seems a little unfair to a business owner to do that. But if we have to go back because they have violations, the return fee, because we're going back, there's usually a charge for it. And then again, that charge can be anywhere from 15, 25, 35, depending on what town you look at. So that would be something that we would have to sit down and have to come up with an agreement of fair prices. But there, basically what this has been brought up for is to show that there is a potential for the Fire Marshal's office to generate fees as a building official would do for a permit fee. It's a possibility for that. And it's just, I think it was something, because it was Michael and I were speaking, just something to, you know, throw out and just kind of think, something to think about.
So John, your Group A every year, you're mandatory every year, those are the last two bullets you're referring to. The institutional occupancies, healthcare, daycares, and all occupancies that have state license, liquor bars, restaurants.
Yeah.
Those are the last. So is it?
And the reason I wanted him to provide you with this information is because the more we talked, the more we found out how common this is. I had thought that this was an exception because, quite honestly, 30 years ago, the idea of a building permit was to cover everything. And that is no longer the case because of the complexity and the volume of work and time involved in this. And that's why so many towns have splintered this up and made it a separate charge unto itself. And especially when you see the amount of work that goes into just one building, you realize that the building permit doesn't come close covering all of the costs associated with everything that has to go on there. And then there are a lot of things that go directly to him and aren't part of the building permit process. But when I saw the volume and when I learned about the commonality of this with other towns, doing it and us not doing it, I thought that it really needed to be brought forward. We didn't get into the weeds and put together a fee schedule and everything else because I said to John, let's make sure that the council is at least receptive to it. And if they are, we'll take it to the next level. But I think it's something that really is worthy of being looked at very carefully and considered.
One thing that I think is important to note is that if this were to be implemented, that's another 600 ballpark transactions that we would be dealing with a year. And I don't know, I don't have the staff at this point to just dump 600 transactions onto one of the existing employees. So there would be, there would be another, you know, a cost to implement this as well.
Yeah, you know, we could come up with a bunch of different ways to, to increase taxes. These fees are an increasing tax. I don't care what anybody says. Everyone pays a base tax in this town for the services of public safety in every department. And every department's here now, in the past, and for the next couple of weeks, giving us their thought process on why they need more. I mean, a whole bunch of things are going through my mind. I mean, we have state regulations that are mandates that are in front of these requirements. If we have a deputy fire marshal that's spending half of his time on reporting, why can't we find a staff person to do that? So that person, so he could be out doing inspections. I mean, how hard, I mean, I understand maybe a fire marshal has to sign off on the report, but why should someone with his expertise be sitting behind a desk for half the time when he really could be out doing some of these inspections that are mandated?
We agree. But the one secretary that we have is the secretary for five full-time employees. And she does, she also does work for the fire marshal. She tallies, she does, you probably couldn't want to speak about, but she does all the fire calls and tallies.
Maybe you need more staff. I don't know, but with someone with that expertise being.
Is it wasted effort? Absolutely.
So talk a little bit about the fees, whether it's a building department fee or not. You know, I pay a lot of fees, and I think they're exorbitant as they are. So to add more is, I can, I can take a house, come through the Cheshire process, take the identical house built in Sutherland, take the identical house built in Madison, take the identical house built in Hamden, and they're all different permit fees. But basically, it's the same service. So, and Cheshire is high. So we can keep adding fees and adding and adding and adding, but I'm not sure that's the answer. Is there any, is there any way that we can recover some of our costs? If we're up on I-84 at an accident, why can't we bill the insurance company? Why can't the insurance, an insurance company pay for a service that we're providing? They pay for a wrecker service to go get the car.
We used to get the state to reimburse us when we're on the highway. That, that went away in the rolling era.
That'll never come back, I'm sure. But, but I'm talking about an insurance company.
I mean, we could, we could explore that, but I don't, I'm not sure all insurances would reimburse.
Well, maybe that's where our state legislators, legislators, if they're, they have all these mandates that they talk about, they need to be able to have a recovery where our municipalities can recover some of these costs. If you have an accident on Route 10, they call the power company, they call the state to come fix the guardrails, the insurance company's paying for all those things. They pay for that stuff. Why can't they pay for a response?
That would question.
The other comment I have is, thank God we have Eaton Park and they contribute. But maybe there could be another thought process to go back to them and ask if they can help with some of our additional needs. You look at the addresses that are listed in the reports, they use a lot of our service. And maybe they'd be willing to help us out a little bit more. I know the gift accounts for both police and fires, you know, kind of everyone gets a little anxious about that, but maybe we need some of that into the operating budget.
Well, I was gonna talk about that. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mention that, that I already hit you for that and I hit Chief Drive. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The memo that's in your packet lists where the gift account funds are going, and that is pretty much 100% funding operating budget stuff. That's not, the days of us buying the nice to haves ended when other council members were here. So these accounts, I've got some accounts in my budget allowance this year that are zeroed out. Those are directly being funded by the gift account. So they may not be handing Michael a check or handing it to me, but in the end, it's all coming back to the operating budget. My operating budget is reduced directly by what the gift account is.
But maybe they can give us a little bit. Has anyone gone back and asked?
I would not want to be the one to go put my hand out and in. You know, maybe that's.
They can always say no, but what's, if they understand the services and the pressures that are put on the departments, it doesn't hurt to ask. You guys are here asking us. I mean, just a thought process.
We, they are not what I would call one of our frequent flyers. We probably go there 10 times a year. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Eaton Park?
Eaton Park.
For fire.
For fire alarms. Maybe 12 times, maybe once a month. I mean, with.
No, we're up in to the twenties.
Are we?
We have some medicare there a couple times.
Right. Well, we have other places that demand a lot more of our responses. Phil's Village, that we're there probably, you know.
Probably more like 40 or 50.
Yeah.
That we get nothing, you know.
Well, is that, is there, is there a reason for it? Are there alarms updated? Are they not functioning, or is it just the nature of business?
Doing what they're doing. If they, if they didn't put smoke detectors in the kitchen area when they built that, they probably might have to do that. And you've approached trying to get them to replace those smoke detectors and the heat detector.
Which they do have.
I mean, one of the things we even looked at, and he put a decision package together for it and I pulled it, was pay per call for service. When you see what it costs us to roll a truck out, and it's expensive, I was just curious to see if we charged people for responding to their fire calls, what we would be charging them and how much we would collect. But, you know, we can't get to that level. We're at a watershed moment in municipal government in this state. We're getting squeezed by the state really badly, and we're also trying as hard as we can to grow the grant list and keep taxes as low as possible. And what we're finding is that what's happening in this industry is that more and more municipalities are looking at user fees to recover costs for unique specialized services that had traditionally been absorbed by the general fund. And as a standalone, do make sense as, as a likely candidate for a charge. And then given the nature, and I don't mean to disagree with you, Paul, but in many cases, it's to construct something to generate revenue for a party. It's, it's somebody going to make money off of a project. And so these have become some of the more defensible types of ideas, and that's why more and more communities are resorting to that. But you're gonna see us continually look at this kind of stuff where we are providing a specialized service and only a small portion of our community is benefiting from it, then we ask ourselves, should all of our taxpayers subsidize this? And we're asking ourselves that every day more and more and coming up with things like this, simply because of the cost and the time involved in doing these things. But there was a time, yes, when your ad valorem tax covered anything and everything that we did. And that model is changing, and it's gonna change rather dramatically, I think, over the next five years.
I just think, I'm open to everything that you're presenting. I'm just, I'm just trying to have a better understanding of it. And, you know, for example, the inspections for a liquor store. I mean, those owners are probably gonna say, "Well, I already pay a lot of taxes in Cheshire for, you know, to have my business here." And, you know, I just don't know where these mandates come from all the time. It doesn't even make sense. I mean, does it make sense that you have to go into a liquor store to do an inspection? Why, how come you're not going into some other store, a barber shop? I mean, they have state licenses.
It's not a liquor store, though. It's an establishment that serves. Not a liquor store.
Oh, I thought you meant like a package store.
No, bars.
I misunderstood that. All right, okay.
And the other thing, too, is that, you know, there's no reason why every one of the things that we've looked at has to be incorporated into a fee schedule. There are likely things that, after you debate them, maybe don't make sense to you. But we're just throwing out this range of things that other towns are doing and areas where there's normally an inspection fee associated with.
Do we charge for invalid alarms now?
Yeah.
Have we ever changed that fee?
Yeah, that went up a couple of years ago, I think, the alarm fee. Yeah. And I think it went from 75 to 150, right?
Yeah, the other thing I want to say, they probably won't be too popular, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I'm on a roll.
Stop now.
I almost, I almost think it's, it's an insult to offer 50 cents more per call to our volunteer firefighters. No wonder they don't show up, or they don't want to show up. I mean, $5 a call? You haven't had an increase in how many years, like?
Since 2013.
In 13 years?
2013.
Sorry, so five years. So I think everyone here has had, most people here have an increase in five years. And we're offering a, you know, a 10%. I just think we need to relook at that and rethink about that. And there has to be other creative ways to increase our volunteer numbers. Can you offer our town employees and staff a stipend to be trained, that it can be cross-trained for other departments that are, that are here during the day anyway? Anybody in public who works, park and rec, whatever. I mean, there has to be other ways to look.
No, we have, and believe me, this is, this is not the answer. But until we have that answer, I felt that it was a disservice to them to not at least provide some modest increase. And it had traditionally been 50 cents, and 50 cents is $7,000. I would have liked to have given them more. Dan, John, Rick, Don.
Jack.
Yeah, I'm thinking of Lou. Lou, Jack, and I had spent the better part of four months trying to come up with a more reasonable, affordable, realistic recommendation for ways to attract and deal with this problem in a more cost-effective way than the report we sent in December of '14. And one of the things we talked about was ways to attract people who are here in town doing other businesses and ways to attract our own employees. I'm fine with anybody who works here leaving and going to a fire. It's just how do we, how do we attract them and how do we get them into the service of the fire department? And that, that is an option. And that's something that we explored. And we explored all kinds of variations of pay grades based on, these guys did a great job of showing us when the volume of activity is, okay? So that's when you want to pay the most because that's when you will want to attract the people. And the challenges they have getting people out of bed at night, and the idea that maybe what we should do is pay somebody to stay in the firehouse because the most important thing is getting the truck to the site. And at least if you get the truck there within five to 10 minutes, it's a lot easier than having somebody drive to the firehouse and get the truck and then go to the fire. So we've looked at the range of things, and we're gonna continue to, and we had hoped that it would be ready to bring to you at this point. And it isn't. And so the alternative was, I just didn't want to see these guys wait another six months or nine months until we have a more reasonable solution to this problem.
Yeah, and I, the other solution that you're talking about, I don't know that our community's ready for that. The state of the economy of our town, our state, I mean, I understand the pressure towards going toward that, that department, but, you know, we're concerned about paying for what we're talking about here, never mind the next step. At some point, that may come, but I don't, I just don't know how anyone's gonna.
Well, what we were trying to come up with was really a gradual progression of a more sophisticated and responsive pay-per-call system. Not necessarily creating a full-time department, but maintaining the volunteer department, but providing reasonable incentives to get people to be available to do the things that are required. Like being in a firehouse at night so that they can get the truck out quickly. Or paying them more money for going out at night for a fire. Or paying them more money for the peak times of the day when we need people to respond. Right now, whether you go out at 9 o'clock in the morning or 3:00 AM, the pay is the same, and that doesn't really make sense. It should be, it should be geared to the level of inconvenience and the importance of attracting somebody at that time. And so this is, this has been ongoing. And again, we're not, we're not suggesting a paid department. We're suggesting a more responsible and aggressive way of paying them for what they do. But still, still maintaining a volunteer department.
What I will say is that this is not a Cheshire problem. This is not a Connecticut problem. This is a nationwide.
I've read, I've read a lot online, pretty something about that. I understand.
I think we're probably ahead of the game if you look at some of our neighbors. What I will say is that we're probably, from a pay-per-call standpoint, we're probably one of the most that I, that I, my colleagues that are in this business. You guys.
Be more, be more. And did you provide?
I can't debate a lot of time. I'm gonna be quiet after. That's my last question here. Are ISO ratings, that is an ISO rating that the community has, are we in jeopardy if all of that being downgraded? Because if that happens, then our insurance cost for each business and each home in Cheshire goes up. Is that, is that correct or not?
Go ahead, Chief, if I may. Based on our equipment that we are allowed to repeatedly buy, we are, in my opinion, not in danger ISO rates. I had this conversation, as you will remember, Mr. Salkin, with the town council prior to being on the board. And long and the short of it is that that town council person disagreed that fire equipment had anything to do with the ISO rating, and it has 100% to do with the ISO rating. Not all insurance companies use that ISO rating. However, with the equipment that we are fortunate enough to buy, age of the equipment, we're teetering on by kicking the can down the road and not staying on the chief's plan with replacing equipment, we could become in danger. But at this point, we're not. We've already pushed out, chief, was it one year or two years? Two years as far as replacement of an engine. So that one vehicle will be 27 years old, maybe 28 years old before it's replaced. Now granted, that's not something that goes out the door every single day, but that's something that I'm in charge of maintaining. And that will raise the cost to try and find parts for a 27, 28-year-old vehicle. vehicle that just doesn't have.
Is there a number that we're assigned for our classification?
We're a four and a nine. And the biggest driver, four is the good number, nine is not. The biggest driver is water, the difference between those two numbers. So, that's another component that Jack Hydrants routinely, you know, tries to put in to expand into that nine area. So, any, any business or home that are in the nine, you know, they're probably either not going to get much of a break or maybe an increase in their premium. It's, that nine is getting smaller in territory. If you look at our maps over time, for water is the biggest driver.
There's a bunch of different things that factor in.
I mean, there's like, there's like a twelve-part, you know, of the report, apparatus, dispatch.
The number of dispatchers is something that we've taken a hit on. That actually has an effect on our ISO, the receipt handling of alarms.
And all the insurance companies know that. And if you live in the nine zone, well, if you live in the zone where water's not so high, you're paying more as insured. They're already capturing that, so to speak.
Because they do call us. They want to know where the nearest hydrant is.
Right.
And then, some get very detailed, well, how much water are you bringing and where is it coming from? So, I have to fill out a report saying, here's the distance to the stations to the nearest hydrant, here's how much water we're bringing on the initial alarm. And our recall, and mutually, some of our towns on those borders have tankers.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I just add one thing? Sure. I know that, that on the surface, this paper call increase looks very measly and cheap. But the one thing I want to remind you is, is that there are a combination of benefits that we do have for the firefighters. We have a relatively good pension plan, I think, for a volunteer force. They might disagree, but there were some good enhancements made about eight years ago. There is a tax abatement program available if they qualify and there is life insurance. And the key was, when we were talking, is how do we bring these four things together in a way that takes, and I guess elevates it to the point where collectively it makes it a really attractive opportunity for somebody to continue to do it? Because some of these things started out being incentives and they were, and they're no longer incentives. So, they have to be revisited and modified. But it's the totality of the package, not just one element, because everybody's looking for some other kind of benefit. Some of the guys are there for the pension. Some are there for the abatement.
So, I'm going to ask another question, I have a comment. So, what are some of the stipends that are offered to a volunteer? Is it, is there a tax abatement for their vehicle or their?
The abatement gets, gets applied however they want to apply it. If they qualify for a five-hundred-dollar abatement, most of them, I guess, take it as a reduction against their house. But some of them don't own homes and so they take it off of their vehicle.
Why don't we do a tuition tax credit? Some of these kids probably don't even own vehicles. If you're trying to get younger people involved in the fire department.
It doesn't, it doesn't get applied to, unlike the veterans' credit, it comes off of the value of the house. Our payment comes directly off your tax bill.
It's off, it's off.
And it's not immediate either. It's after.
Yeah, you have to pay it five years, I think, and so many points.
And the most is a thousand dollars.
And it, it works, again, but you.
Doesn't seem it.
Well, it's, it's preserving and maintaining the core, I think, and, and.
The core is declining, but again, I can't say that that's because of anything that the council has or hasn't done. We've, I think we've been pretty innovative with the exception probably of the paper call. The pension is one of the more robust pensions in the state that I know of. The paper call is pretty much whatever. We tie everything to performance. Nobody, some departments, if you walk in the door and you're breathing, here's a thousand dollars to that. We took a different approach. I mean, it's time and participation based. So, we don't give anybody, you know, we don't give anybody entry rights. But, you know, with the exception of maybe the paper call, I think we're doing everything we possibly can to try to get people, you know, through the door.
And maybe what we should do is lower the threshold for eligibility. I think it's five years. And maybe we start it at three years. I don't know. But those are the things that we were kicking around that there's no perfect way to solve this, to get everybody to want to participate.
I respectfully disagree. I mean, our best, our vetting period of trying to determine, we just don't want to throw something at anybody with a pulse. Where meticulous now is to make sure that those that are being rewarded are doing the right thing.
Right.
So, I think if lowering the requirements would be a bad idea. It all comes back to paper call. We have committees that are saving this town six figures on a fire truck purchase, another six figures on a ladder truck, a pumper, so on and so forth. And I think everybody's grateful that there is a bump up, you know, for fifty cents. And those of us that have take-home vehicles, we're making half of the paper call, which is atrocious. So, as Michael's reminded me before, I am a sitting chief, but I'm not employed by the town, so I can pretty much say that it's insulting to have the three-fifty paper call when I'm supposed to be the one to charge the majority of these incidents.
And we have a, not to cut you off. We have a list of the area towns on this paper call stuff so we can make a more informed or have a more informed combinations and conversations.
Yeah. But the thing, first of all, understand, I wasn't suggesting you compromise the quality of the people you bring in. I'm just thinking, if I'm a young kid and the idea of an abatement is out there, but I have to wait five years for it, it might not encourage me to want to join. All I'm suggesting is maybe we ought to make some changes and modify the levels before they qualify. Not that you should compromise the quality of what you're bringing in. The other thing is, is that paper call across the board, I don't think is, a fixed fee is really the way to do this. Again, I go back to the guy who goes out at three o'clock in the afternoon and goes out at three in the morning.
You don't think it's the way to do it?
I think they should be, there should be a staggered or graduated amount. They might disagree.
In other words, you're suggesting get a long-term to get up at midnight versus.
I mean, he should have a little bit more of a reward for going out than somebody who's maybe on their way home from work, it's three P.M. and they go to the same fire. So, I think a flat fee across the board needs to be revisited.
But we'll never settle this here.
No, 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 no. But these are the conversations that we've had for the last.
Could we simply see this, because I don't know if five-fifty's insulting, if six-dollar isn't insulting? And I don't know where it stands against.
Yeah.
No, I don't think. Waterbury, Hampton.
We'll work on it tomorrow and hopefully have.
Yeah, you got to, no. Yes, Patty?
Thank you. Totally separate, can I go back on something that Paul mentioned? What, would it make that much, how much of an impact would it make to free up manpower hours if you had additional administrative staff to handle reports and such?
It would make a significant impact, especially what the deputy fire marshal's.
Okay. Could we see some information along those lines, what's a plus for that would be, what it would be freeing up, what that kind of hours, so that we even know that?
Are you taking notes?
And another thing that's just behind it going through my mind on this fire service, it seems as though every member of the community is benefiting from fire service, potentially having to use it or whatever. I know we all pay taxes for everything, so we're benefiting from everything, so to speak. But is it, is it potentially possible to identify a specific charge, if you will, in a tax bill that is a dedicated charge identified for the fire department? Just as a, as a rough example. You could explain it on the bottom of the bill. This is a prevent.
If you live in a city or a county, I'm sorry, anything, fire district, like West Haven, S.D. Fire District, Simsbury has a fire district. So, Simsbury, you pay your taxes at the firehouse. You pay, they add, you get your base mill rate and then the fire department sends you a tax bill and it's an additional mill rate on top of your tax.
So, somebody smarter than me already thought of this.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting that we do it.
It's impossible.
Well, wait a minute.
No, that's a blessing. That's a blessing.
Smarter than him or?
I can blame it on them.
See, there's a downside to everything.
There is.
One of the districts is badly, badly underfunded. You have three chiefs fighting over domain responsibilities. And you have this duplication of effort where you have three chiefs in one town.
Three fire marshals.
And three fire marshals. And it's not the most workable thing.
Now, that, I'm not the person that thought of that. Okay?
West Haven is not the model for many municipal.
No, and I understand that. All I thought is, is potentially possible to just identify a user being in a tax bill that says, this is a surcharge for the pleasure of having a volunteer firefighter?
No.
And I don't know, maybe it's a boneheaded idea, maybe it's impossible to even think about. But, you know, that might be something that people wouldn't groan so much about.
Yeah. Well, as Arnett's pointing out, we have the per capita cost built into the budgets of all of the departments. But what is not done, we're not doing is taking it out and charging it as a separate sixty-seven dollars for every household. We're simply saying that of your tax bill, about sixty-seven dollars of it is going to fire service.
Thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents.
Oh, is that what it is?
And if you look at what.
I was paying sixty-seven. I heard sixty-seven. It's good to look at the source document.
But as a basis of comparison, you're paying thirty-one sixty-three per capita for fire protection and you're paying fifty-eight eighty for the finance department. So, that's a comparison of the service that you're getting for what you're paying.
Right.
I, I think Jim is going to be very hurt by that. The guy who, the guy who cuts your check every two weeks.
But you know what else?
But you've got eighty people doing that service versus ten.
The point is, if you made a decision.
The damage is done.
But if you made a decision to do that, say, say, we decide as a council, well, it should be more than thirty-seven dollars per household paying for, for fire service. It should be forty-two. And you identify that you want to give that level of an increase as opposed to giving it to Jim's office, because that's a whole big mill increase when you start giving that kind of a percentage increase. If you identified because of a purpose, because of this problem we, so to speak, have, and actually dedicate that money to fixing it.
I'd be totally agree with that.
But it's just a thought. And I don't want to drive everyone crazy with this, it's just.
We got to have a solution before we can come up with a number to put in there.
I completely understand.
Because I want to make sure that the number does what we want it to do.
No, I understand.
Yeah. And that's where the big challenge has been among all of us, is the balance of all of these things. What is the right balance?
Well, I would have to say the council's been waiting, been waiting for your study on staffing for three years.
Well, you had one in fourteen, that went nowhere. And that was a sign to us that this is not maybe going to be the right way to go. And so, we reversed field and tried to come up with another plan. But it was pretty extensive.
So, have we burned any bridges or made any connections?
Not yet, I don't think we've burned any bridges.
I had two decision packages.
I think we've, we've beat the dead horse over paper calling up. I don't know, I think that's something. Page three is what I'm going to talk about. I've been asked by Michael and I think the council, the council, I'd asked, why are we pumping out people's basements? That's not really our job. It's a plumber's job, so, whoever's down it is. We do this about thirty times a year. The cost would be about fifty-eight hundred and fifty-six dollars if we were to charge somebody. My personal feeling is that I don't support it because I'm the person that's looking at these people like their furnace is full and their basement is five feet of water. For me to say, oh, your water's gone, here's a check for six hundred, or a bill for six hundred bucks. I'm not sure that that, that's the message from a, from a customer service standpoint. I'm not sure that that's what we want to do. If you guys think it's a good idea and want us to pursue it, by all means, for fifty-eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, I don't know that the negative public, you know, publicity or public relation to that, that's just my take.
So, you're, are you saying you don't want to just?
No, we provide the service. We provide, we have the equipment to provide the service because there's nobody else to turn to. In most cases, there's nobody else, you know, the water's pouring in because the backyard is frozen and, you know, their furnace is underwater and we're, they're, they're calling us out as a last resort in most cases.
I could see, well, maybe, I could see it as a one-time deal, but if you're getting multiple calls to the same house, I mean, come on, you have a problem, maybe you need to fix it.
No, I agree.
And it's not fair to all the other taxpayers.
But it's construed as additional tax, you know, because hey, I paid my taxes and that comes out of my taxes. You know, that's what probably will.
That's not a normal call.
Yeah.
For Michael, you know, Jeff would say something.
Well, maybe you get the first one free. Right. Are there, are there houses where you go to that house multiple times in the course of a year?
Yeah, it happens once in a while.
Not all.
Maybe twice a year, if, you know.
It's all weather dependent. Twice a year, every year, then that's.
Well, and that's the way we do our fire alarm fines. You know, what do we give them? Two free calls and then we charge them? It's three?
A combination of those.
I would think one free.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, so we have that model in place with the fire alarm fine. And so, we could do something similar where it's one a year.
Take on a Home Depot or someplace around the corner.
Yeah.
Well, we will go back, we can, we can go back and refine that.
Yeah, that seems.
It sounds like there's some interest in it.
But it seems, at that level, then now you're talking a very small number. Yeah, but it is just a matter of, if you're going to the same place twice a year, I mean, you want to be getting a Christmas card.
Yeah. A lot of times, they do give us a donation. It may not be six hundred dollars, but if you're coming and pumping my basement out a couple of times, I'll send you a box of dollars, twenty bucks or whatever. I mean, that's.
I mean, we do see it as good public, public relation.
Especially since we're a lot of public relations.
We do probably too much of that. I don't know, do you want to get into the get-together?
No, I don't think, I think that you have here, we're going to, they're going to have multiple meetings and we're going to have to go through some of this stuff.
I think we're concerned mostly about the staffing concerns.
So are we.
And that isn't initiative, it is a work of progress. There is, you know, we just need to get back together.
And, and you know, the reason I didn't come in here with two clerical people is because of the continuing pressures that we're feeling.
We understand.
And, but we have to be honest at the same time.
Right.
Because ideally, if they could have another staff person, we'd make their lives easier.
We're going to, it's going to be a lot more costly if, God forbid, we have a fire in some pre-unit apartment and they haven't done inspection in four years.
I know.
I think a liability for that's going to far outweigh a couple of administrative.
And we also look at all of the staff positions as, you know, kind of after pulls up.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Especially the ones.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Poor Keith hasn't said a word.
Good man. Hey, John, could you stick around for this presentation by Keith? Because you guys work so.
Oh, yeah. Well, actually, too, even something brought up, I think, really has to be addressed by Keith. You can let that be, that be kind of, we need to dig into his fees to see if they're covering those fees.
No, they're not.
Jim, how are you doing?
Jim and I could work on it and show you. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, I know, but I was going to have you sit over here. Jack, I think she owes you.
Jim, it wasn't, it wasn't a shot at you, Jim. It was just a simple comparison.
He sensed it. He hit him goofy the other night, so I was sensitive. I was fired up. I yield, I yield twelve, I yield twelve minutes to Paul Bowman. Dave hasn't got. Hello, Keith. Welcome, welcome, and thank you for being a little late. We got, we got the big fire guys out of the way.
I found the presentation very interesting.
All of this stuff is extremely helpful.
Well, it all ties in.
It is.
We're very close together. A lot of times, we're doing inspections together. So, then.
Do we have a decision? Is he within the decision?
Yeah, yeah, he's page, page one. Yeah. And I'll just.
He's number one.
And I'll give you a quick overview and then I'll turn it over to Keith. Do you know everybody? Yeah. Okay, that's good. Okay. If you look at page one hundred and nine, it's where the dollars are. And really, the only major change here, and he has it outlined on his decision package, is the request to reclassify the electrical inspector to the physician assistant, a building official. We do have these dollars already in the proposed budget, but because it's a vacancy and it's new, well, any vacancy at all will have a decision package associated with it. So that, again, we go into detail as to whether the physician gets funded or not funded. In this case, it's a physician that's in his budget, but he will reclassify him. And again, as I said, with the fire department, Keith's office has experienced a significant increase in their volume of activity. And the nice thing that he reported to me today is there's an awful lot of building going on, or prospective building going on. And, you know, there's not a lot of publicity about it, but you know of the two major initiatives, but there's many others. And the other thing, too, that happens is that there's a lot of people who have interest and take up a lot of his time and his time with questions before they'll ever initiate acquisition of a property or proceed with a renovation or an expansion. So we have a lot of false starts, too, and it's time-consuming. Again, because of the complexity of the code, it's just taking a lot of time to get permits back to the permit key, inspections done and so on. And the one good thing we've done is we've added a new software component that all the departments have used. But really, it doesn't, it still doesn't take away from the fact that you have to do field inspections and you have to sit down and do plan reviews. And what it's done is it's allowed us to simplify the record-keeping, expedite information retrieval, and it's also hopefully gonna make it easier for the users because they can have the permits from home. So it's worked okay. We have some bugs that we have to get worked out, but it hasn't necessarily done a lot to streamline the basic issues that they deal with. And that is actually going out and doing material activities. And so as a result of that, he's falling behind and we have some concerns about that, and that was the genesis of this request. I mean, that's really the sum and substance of the increase here, and I've talked to nothing. I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you very much. I just want to give you a brief recap based on the startup of our online permitting software, which was February 1st. We've received approximately two-hundred-and-fifty requests for permits since February 1st. We've seen permits for eleven new homes, one of which is a rebuilt from a fire, the other ten are new residential single-family dwellings. We met today in the very office for the kickoff of the fifty thousand square foot medical office building on Route 10 here. I've met with individuals. They're talking of redeveloping a large parcel of the industrial park. Taken a building, potentially taken a building down and rebuilding a larger building on that property. We've got some first-floor office alterations in an existing building along Route 10. We have an office suite being built in an existing storage building. They spent the center, cleaned the building out and they're doing a whole new office suite. I've got approximately, I have five demolitions pending in five different locations, some of which are on Route 10, some of them are in other locations. Some of them are through enforcement actions and some of them are voluntary. I've been in contact with a design professional and we anticipate plans for another large medical facility replacement, a care-down replacement that's been in the works for a while. I saw plans for a multi-acre greenhouse facility. They're working right now to get approval through the state offices, the traffic administration for traffic generators. So that will probably be coming in as soon as they get through those hurdles. So with these very large projects and the volume of projects, I currently have an electrical inspector and an assistant building official. So typically, they, they go out during the day as a team, so one person covers, you know, the electrical and Conrad covers the belts. So now, in the event that Conrad is sick, I go out with the electrical inspector to conduct inspections and no one's doing my job, which is issuing permits, issuing certificates of occupancy, plan review, and permit processing, which is now all online. So I'm taken away from my job to cover for him. When I go on vacation, he basically does his job. And my job, I fall farther and further behind, although he receives a stipend to cover for my position. He's basically coming in doing his own job and my job is unfilled for that duration. So I'm limited to how much vacation time I take. Usually if I take five days in a row, it's significant. So right now, I've come in on holidays, you know, snow days, and we've been closed for the holiday of the day. I'm coming in and trying to play catch-up, so I'm struggling right now to get my head above water. So with the advent of my electrical inspector being dual-certified and becoming an assistant building official, he's gonna be able to go out on his own, so we'll have two teams out in separate cars versus one team in one car. And it's gonna give me the ability to work in the office more often to try to cover, you know, the issuance of permits and then close out documents.
At a time when we're trying to do everything we can to really create an incentive for economic development and grandest growth, the last one we want to do is give Lousy service in the first office that they're gonna visit. And delay what, in many cases, is going to be a very short timeline for many of these developers. Like Keith was telling me, he gets a call from a developer and he asks questions, how long will it take me to get this permit? How long will it take me to get that permit? They want to know what the timeline is and they want it fast-tracked as fast as they can, and it impacts them as well. So the service is becoming more and more critical and because of the complexities, everything is taking so much longer. And so it's now having effect on backing things up in his office at a time when we don't want that to happen.
So Keith, on your end, has our department given you any trouble getting permits up? Have they slowed up your process?
No, they haven't.
They haven't?
The Fire Marshal's office hasn't either.
Is your department revenue neutral, revenue negative, or revenue positive?
It, for the most part, were revenue neutral to positive, depending on the economy. You know, this, this last couple of months, we've been seeing some very robust growth. And I don't know if it's attributed to, you know, the roots being planted for a lot of these projects, you know, years ago and they're finally coming to fruition. But I know that these weren't projects that just started within the last year. They've been ongoing and there's been a lot of planning.
Page fifty-six, Michael, of this book?
Yeah.
Where it says seventeen eighteen appropriated general fund revenue, is that, is that the fees directly associated with the building department, the building official?
Yep, and then if you look, the other...
But what you're saying, Keith, is that could be different every, every year, basically.
It is.
The stuff that just, and it is, right.
Yeah.
Right, you have the upswing and then you have the down year. Definitely had some dead years.
Absolutely. This, this spring seemed to be very robust, you know, with eleven new homes in essentially three weeks or a month.
Right.
That's, that's pretty significant.
Right.
Not to mention the medical office building. You know, these are big projects. They're hoping to build that out, I think, what'd they say, sixteen months or fourteen months? Fourteen months, which is a pretty aggressive program. You know, at the present time, they've got plans in for a shell building, a core. So they haven't really come in with a tenant fit up until they get their program together, but they've got enough to get going on just getting the core of the building up.
Did you bring the plans that you showed me earlier today?
Of course not.
Oh, okay.
I have those plans.
No, it's just pretty overwhelming when you see that this is one of five plans that has to be reviewed. And it's got two that's got a diameter of about nine inches.
Right.
And I'm like, wow, okay, why it takes so long?
And this is a good point, and I don't need to jump in in your parade, but Keith and I work very close together. Just about every project, we're side by side. We go out together and do inspections. You know, we overlap quite a bit. And just what was mentioned here by Michael about, about public service and, you know, customer service, and that's something that I brought up in my presentation also. A builder wants to build, he needs us there. You know, him waiting for us is time, it's money. And if Keith can't get out there and I can't get out there, delays it another day and then it backs up because we have appointments the next day and it just backs up. It just, it's, it's not good customer service. And I think it's important for the town of Cheshire to provide excellent customer service. We have an excellent team in this town. And just little things that we're looking for, reclassifications, part timers and stuff like that, provides another level up of that customer service, which I think is important.
So when you look at eleven new homes, let's say it's, you know, on a daily basis, what are we talking after the CO's issue? Significant to get to the finish line so the property taxes are being paid. Thirty bucks a day, maybe? Pretty cheap, thirty bucks a day at least. You know, if you look at that to, the sooner, the better to get to a CO, the more...
Yeah, the sooner it gets on the grand list, right?
Exactly. So like twenty-five to thirty bucks a day depending on the size of the house.
So your reclassification, that just is, we're using the same person, but because...
Exactly.
But because of the reclass and the incremental cost, I guess, you're saying that you're actually increasing the service.
Correct. Using the existing staff, I want to use them to its full license potential. Because he's licensed as an electrical inspector and assistant building official. We hired him as an electrical only.
Right, but it seems like a no-brainer.
And by contract, we can't have him do the work even though he is certified to do your work because we'll have agreements.
Okay.
He is qualified.
He's not paid as an assistant building official, so we can't ask him to do that work.
Right, okay, and that is the way it goes, and that's fine. So we just can address this, though, so it's properly taken care of in the budget process.
Yep.
Okay.
So that, so that one, one person could now go out, instead of having both, two people go out at this, to the project, that person can then serve both, both functions at that one property, leaving that other, both you to do your work and then the other assistant building official to even go out and do other, other work as well.
Correct.
And not have to go as a tag team.
Correct.
Do we have a vehicle for that person?
Yes.
It's a brand-new one, I hope, that's in the capital budget.
It is brand-new. It was delivered last year.
They're good vehicles.
Because you got some spare police cars.
Don't laugh. I did use a surplus police car when my pickup truck flew up.
That was just for the peanut gallery.
And surplus police, you're driving.
I know, we did.
We're gonna charge you twenty-five dollars an hour. Is that the mannequin that comes with the mannequin?
Anybody have any more?
No, Keith, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. I thought that was important. Thank you. That helps us.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, Neil, do you want to introduce yourself? I don't know, do you need introduction?
The new sign in the...
Nope.
No, you can't do it. You don't want him to do it.
He starts slurring his words.
The guy got a sign telling me to have all nine-one-one on it.
You know, I don't want to seem like a sexist. You can do it. Thanks, you're going out there. Forget where I've been.
Yeah, we will.
Right.
Why don't you sit over here, but we're talking about...
Just in case things start getting thrown, I'm gonna sit on the table.
This way you guys got a whole bunch of the road covered with the guns, too.
You have the procedure package. You need to see it, the numbers or the pager of everything, but it's in the order that we went through.
Just what I want.
And that wants to say we talked about, you know, the dispatch as well.
Thank you, John. For joining us.
Bill, sir?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Very comfortable.
You're on page eighty-one in the line item detail, which is pretty much... Eighty-one in the line item detail, which is where I'm gonna start. I'm just gonna talk about some numbers and then I'll, and then over to the chief, and there's a few decision packages that are associated with this budget as well. If you look on page eighty-one, you see that the budget's supposed to go up by two-hundred-twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-three dollars or four-point-oh-six percent. The one thing I want to emphasize is that I recommended the fully funding of the forty-eighth and the forty-ninth positions. And the chief will get involved in detail to that. But that alone represents one-hundred-twelve thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars of that two-hundred-thirty-four thousand, oh, thank you, six-hundred-and-forty-seven dollar increase. Okay, so without that, the increase would only be about a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars or about two-point-four-seven percent, which is almost in line with what the contract increase was. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I supported the increase of the overtime accounts to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars. That will give the chief a budgeted overtime of four-hundred thousand dollars for next year. In fiscal sixteen, the department spent four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars on overtime. And in fiscal seventeen, they spent four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars on overtime. So even with the twenty-five thousand dollar increase in the overtime accounts, it's still fifty thousand dollars less than where it was two years ago, forty-five thousand less than where it was last year. And keep in mind, those numbers are pre-contract award numbers. For two years, their salaries were constant. So if I were to actually factor in the two-point-four percent increase, it would translate to about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in overtime just to meet the level of expenses for the last two years. So while that number seems high, in contrast to what's been spent in the past, it's actually much lower. And it's much lower because of the number of contractual changes that gave me relative premium time for weekends and, I think, the holiday, and premium, I'm sorry, premium holidays. The other thing I wanted to mention is, and you'll see it when we go through the non-salaried side of this thing, the chief has already committed thirty thousand dollars of a gift account to pay for equipment lines. There's one equipment line that's zeroed out and it's said to be paid by gift account. There's another one that was, I think, reduced by twenty thousand, ten thousand, and it says pay by gift account. So that's another reason why I think the budget, again, is not really going up as much as it appears once you take out those two positions, the overtime, and then factoring out the...
But there's another piece of this, Michael. You mentioned it on the budget meetings or whatever. You had, you had included in your previous thinking on the budget before it was settled out that we were gonna address some staffing issues, problems and concerns, I should say, with dispatch.
Yes, and that's all in there.
So it was the trade-off, so that's part of this decision package.
Yeah, it is. And what happened is at the eleventh hour, I made a switch. I had originally gone with the idea that we probably should add a request for dispatchers because the problem is the problem and it hasn't changed. But then because of the increased concern and need for full staffing in order to deal with school security issues, I basically flip-flopped, pulled the dispatchers out and recommended funding to pay them.
But in conversations, we can come to a different conclusion, obviously. So I guess, I guess my question is, do the decision packets, will they enable us to, say, look at the overall department total? If in fact we agree we should fund, say, up to the forty-eighth officer and not the forty-ninth, but we've also addressed a staffing concern with dispatch? Is there, is there gonna be a model for that that we see or can get ultimately?
Well, I think a lot depends on where the conversation goes.
Exactly.
What, what we're doing is, we are, he has, the chief has decision packages supporting the importance of the forty-eighth and forty-ninth officers. We also have a decision package which shows you the importance of dispatchers. We never funded that in the proposed budget, but we want, you know, understand the critical nature of that and the impact it also has on police services because police are doing dispatch work and also the dispatch is not at a level that any of us are comfortable with consistently. And why don't I let him take the...
Absolutely. I just wanted to get the table set for that because I think it's important.
He's got the decision packages all, all basically on those items. He's got the decision packages all basically on those items, and I'll have him work through.
I'll start with the sworn police officer positions because those numbers are reflected in the proposed budget that you have. So just a quick overview, if you don't mind flipping to page fifteen, the little chart that I made up about where the shortages were, so...
These are in the handouts.
Yep, just to fill in the, kind of in reverse order there, but on Friday afternoon, we swore in Officer Jason Picorillo. He is a sworn certified police officer who we managed to entice to come here from Bloomfield. So he will have about a month of internal training and some field training, but then he will be, he will be able to go out on patrol by himself, which is...
He's the forty-sixth officer then, that's what that means?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And he's a Cheshire resident.
And yeah, lives in town, you know, was tired of the commute, wanted, you know, he's got kids in the schools, he's a scout master, he approaches baseball, he decided he wanted to police where he lives, too, so very happy to get him, and he'll be getting started. Again, he's already started, but he'll be on the road by the, right around first of the night. Last Friday, I made a, kind of gave an appointment letter to another young man who came through our process with line colors, but he is a, has no previous police experience.
So he's academy brown?
Yeah, he is academy brown, he will start on April sixth. Just a refresher, he'll, it's April sixth for twenty-two weeks, and then back here for twelve additional weeks of field training. It'll be around the first of the year that we hope he will, he will be on by himself. He will have a classmate who at five o'clock this afternoon, I provided an appointment letter to also. If any of you might know Bud's family from town, so Timothy Bud is going to be joining us, they're going to the academy with Michael Morley on April sixth, same timeline, he has no previous police experience, so go to the academy then. So that kind of gets us to the, we're actually, technically, I guess, we're one over what you authorized us right now because Mike Strola's last day technically isn't supposed to happen. By the end of the day tomorrow, he'll be, he is retired. So that leaves, that takes us back to the forty-seventh position, which is technically still frozen, but because it was funded in the budget this year, we didn't do a decision package for it. Now, the forty-eighth position, which was created when Tom Bobach retired back in March of two thousand and sixteen, was frozen for the remainder of the sixteen budget and into the seventeen, and again, well, into the seventeen, so that position's been frozen for a while.
So, excuse me, chief, so is that funded, or is that just, explain the definition of frozen.
Bobach's position, the forty-eighth position has not been funded.
It's frozen but not funded.
Not funded.
And the forty-seventh, as a tall point, is in your operating budget as funded?
Yes, I did write that down as frozen, only because...
I just wanted to understand it.
Right, when we came to the council in November, I got it...
Yeah, there is a very important distinction.
Right, yeah, so the forty-eighth has, there's no money in the budget for the forty-eighth now.
Do we have a body proposed for the forty-seventh? So you've been so lucky on these other two?
Not as of yet, but we do, everybody took the, you guys authorized us to start the hiring process back in November, so we do have an active list now. We've gotten to number three, actually, you do two separate lists, the certified officers take a different test than entry-level people, so we've gone through the first two on our entry-level list. We do have other candidates who we think are qualified, but that's just after the written test and an oral panel that they've gone through. The real heavy lifting for them is background investigation, psychological, medical chap, and polygraph. So, but again, we do think we have some viable candidates. The next academy, if we get approval here, is July sixth, so they would start, you know, basically right after the new fiscal year. The forty-ninth position is one that was built many years ago, I think, actually, Mike said he was the forty-ninth officer. He was sworn in on a Friday, what, two thousand and four? What was that?
Two thousand and four. On a Friday, and the chick passed, she passed away on, over that weekend, which took it back to forty-eight, and the forty-ninth was never, was never filled again, so that is...
We're going to talk specifics, I'm going to have to leave and about personnel.
Well, no, I just, I just mentioned his name, he was the forty-ninth officer on one morning, that's as in-depth as I'm going with that, so. Again, in the context of the meetings that we've had, the executive session with the Board of Education, and then the public meeting at the high school, you know, working with Michael, we decided that if, there seems to be a lot of public support right now, not just in Cheshire, I might add, but there's been multiple news stories over the last week or so about adding school resource officers or putting school resource officers back into schools. Some places like, I think it was Plymouth this morning, their school resource officer position was cut a couple of years ago because of the, you know, budget cuts, but they're looking to get it back. Wallingford had a, their Board of Education is looking to add money to have police officers in their schools where they don't have any right now, and I don't believe they ever have, never had SRO.
Is the definition of an SRO the same throughout the state, or does, different communities have different definitions of what that is?
If you hear a school resource officer, ninety-nine percent of the time, that is a sworn member of the local police department, or in some cases, a state trooper, and, you know, like, some of the technical high schools are state-run, so they'll actually have a state trooper who's the SRO. To be differentiated from armed school security, which is something that's come up since Sandy Book, which has been authorized by statute, that has to be a retired police officer or somebody with military or federal law enforcement experience. So, but the way I use it, school resource officer, to me, means a full-time member of the Cheshire Police Department who's assigned to a school. Again, you guys were all at the meeting, I think, and, you know, we had some people looking at, you know, thinking the National Guard might be a good idea, but there seemed to be a degree of support for the, for the school resource officer at Dodge in particular.
A conversation about that.
Right.
With the forty-eighth officer, I realize it's a frozen position and you don't desire it to be frozen, but where would the impact on the department be if that forty-eighth position was a resource officer, a school resource officer?
The main impact would be that I would, so I think it was late fall, right, we were at the council talking about opioid problems, and one of the things that I was able to do in the past, we've had an officer assigned to the statewide narcotics task force. Now, I'm not telling you that if we assign somebody to statewide narcotics, drug use in Cheshire will cease, but we, we don't have the experience and the resources to bring to really in-depth narcotics investigations in town. Fred Jortner, who's now a lieutenant, spent about four years on the statewide narcotics task force. He was assigned there just before I got here, and stayed in place for about four years. And the resources and the experience that he gained working there, I think, were invaluable. He's now a lieutenant, so he's been promoted twice since, since he came out. The reason he came out was because he was, you know, number one on the sergeant's list and was getting promoted to sergeant. In fact, that's kind of a long way of answering your question, but the long and short of it is, if the forty, if the decision is made that the forty-eighth position is unfrozen but should be the school resource officer, it leaves me a lot less flexibility to then assign somebody to the statewide narcotics task force.
And you had someone assigned to that for, your complete duration as chief prior to your...
For about the first three years that I was here. He went in in two thousand and ten, I came in eleven, he was there for three years.
Okay.
But I have...
So since that time, there's been no one assigned?
I have not had anybody go back in there, because at various times, I mean, we've been down as many as six or seven at one point. But, look, they are on detached duty, they go and they report to an off-site, they're supervised by state police supervisory personnel, they do a lot of work, regional, it's a regional task force.
So it's not necessarily in our community, you're talking about, they go to college, basically, and come back to Cheshire a bit or...
Yeah, now, they, Fred did a lot of work in Cheshire while he was on the task force, but as you can imagine, a regional task force, there's a lot more opportunity to be executing search warrants in New Haven than there are in Cheshire. We had a drug investigation that culminated about six weeks ago with a search warrant execution on Spring Street, but it just so happened that the northwest office of the statewide narcotics task force, which technically doesn't, doesn't really cover Cheshire, happened to, they were working an investigation in their part of the state, and it ended up having a nexus back to Cheshire, and they were able to act on some information and end up coming into town and doing a search warrant. Now, they always call us when they're coming, and they, you know, they call us for the background, hey, do you guys have anything on this address or these people, things like that, but it was just happenstance, they were not looking to do an investigation in Cheshire. And again, look, I don't want anybody to get me wrong, we don't have the type of, you know, street coroner, there's nobody standing on street corners, you know, waiting for you to drive up with a twenty-dollar bill in your hand to, you know, pass heroin to you, but in two thousand and seventeen, we had nine opioid-related deaths, either overdoses that occurred in town or people from town who overdosed in other towns in the state. So we have, you know, we have a, we have an ongoing problem, and it's a, it's a concern, as you heard, I think, back in the, in the late fall from Mara Esposito and Michelle Picorillo, that this is something that definitively is taking place in town.
So just to be clear, a forty-eighth officer, in your estimation, would enable someone within your department to be assigned, it would be your goal?
Yeah.
To get them assigned to the statewide?
And they're always looking. If I call them up and say I have somebody, they will accept them, they are, they are always looking for officers.
So, if I could, because I never understood that before, so, so that means that it's a full-time position on this task force? So even when Lieutenant Jortner was doing and able to do work on any cases here in Cheshire, unless it was with the task force, it was on overtime basis?
No, he came, he came, because it is a narcotics-related task force, so any drug arrests that we had in town, you know, patrol officer pulls somebody over, finds drugs in the car, we would always refer it to him for follow-up.
Okay.
And he was, he was able to bring his partner, who's a state police detective working on the task force with him, to follow up on those cases.
Okay, okay.
So it's not, my point is that it's not like, you know, if on a Wednesday night we're short in patrol because somebody called in sick, I can't just call him to, you know, to come in and take a patrol.
Well, that's what I was trying to understand, because I also didn't understand that it was actually a full-time position outside of...
Yeah, and it is, yeah, and again...
So we really, I mean, we're getting his expertise, but we're really losing his, availability of a, of a body here in town, right?
But again, he would be the lead, we would refer any drug cases to the person on the statewide narcotics task force. I mean, the beauty of that is we only have that one person because they bring their state police resources with them. You would never assign, like, I would never assign a single patrol officer to follow up on a narcotics investigation.
Right, right.
You can get a little massive. You know, so if we were doing it internally, it would be, you know, an officer who, you know, developed the initial information, and then we'd have to pull somebody else to work with them on it, because you just wouldn't, you just wouldn't send somebody else there by themselves to surveil and something.
Thanks, Tim. Chief, from a simplistic standpoint, then, if we're looking at it between the forty-ninth and the dispatcher, let's say we're, we're at the forty-eighth and, and somebody goes off to serve on the task force, just from a real simple standpoint, looking at the forty-ninth and looking at the dispatch, if the dispatch person gets hired, and that's like gaining at least some time that a police officer is covering dispatch, could we hire the dispatcher instead of the forty-ninth, save about twenty-three grand, and still get enough to do the Dodge resource?
It would certainly help, but I, okay, so, there's a lot of information attached to the forty-ninth position there, I am not prepared to ask for that funding on the budget at the beginning of the fiscal year. The main thing that we have to do there is we have to open up negotiations with the dispatcher union. Couple of years ago, there was a complaint about a fire dispatch issue, and we took some action on it to investigate it, and the dispatcher's union filed a grievance.
Fired, did you say fired, they were fired or fired?
No, it was a fire, it was a fire department related, it was a fire call.
Dispatch to the fire.
And there was a, there was a problem with the dispatch, because we had one person working, and things got a little muddled up. When we, just by virtue of taking steps to investigate it, the dispatcher's union immediately filed a grievance, saying that they are police emergency dispatchers, and they, it's not their role to dispatch the fire department. And there's some information, you know, job history, job announcements, things like that, that lend some support to their, to their argument. We had a hearing here with somebody, kind of mediation with the state labor board, we were able to resolve the underlying issue without the labor board guys ruling on that part of it. But in talking to Floyd Dugus, who represented us during the grievance process, he felt that if we were going to expect the dispatchers to also handle fire calls in the manner that a fire call should be handled, that we probably had to, it was going to be, it was going to represent a change in working conditions for the dispatchers, and we would have to negotiate with them. Now, I broached the subject with them informally to say, what would it take, thinking they might come back and say, well, we'll do, we'll do it for two dollars more an hour or something like that. As it turns out, what they're leaning for is they want the increased staffing, they would rather, they would rather see additional dispatchers working so that when a fire incident happens, for example, they, their, their goal would be to get to the, to the place where there's always two dispatchers working, so that when a fire incident comes in, one of those dispatchers can be dedicated to that, to that fire call, and not to get, I know, he's got the whole crew with him, too. What, anecdotally, what used to happen is one of the, you know, the dispatcher at the police department always took the initial nine-one-one call. If it's a fire, they're responsible for dispatching the fire department, so they send out the alerts that everybody gets on their pagers and stuff, you know, there's a fire, we give the address, what the, you know, fire, structure fire, blah, blah, blah. Everybody gets, the, the way it used to work was that one of the first responding fire personnel would go to fire headquarters or sometimes one of the fire stations, and they would set up and act as the fire incident dispatcher. And according to the dispatch, the police dispatchers, that was the end of it, and that's the way it worked for years. Now, for whatever reason, I think primarily due to some staffing issues with the fire department, you probably heard about earlier, they don't always have that luxury anymore. It comes down to, we're going to put firefighters on a truck and send them out for the structure fire, or we're going to have somebody sit in the building and talk to us about the structure fire.
One of the things that I think you articulated quite well in this summary is, the whole term dispatcher is somewhat of a misnomer, because you think that they just dispatched, and the complications and time they spend on an emergency call, I never really appreciated until I listened to an emergency call, and that's, that's the problem. You don't dispatch and go back and then dispatch. You are constantly, well, you tell them what the role of the dispatcher is, I mean, he's basically the, of the type, well, you can explain it.
Yeah, so, you know, nine-one-one call comes in and it's a fire, and, you know, so that's a, it's a major incident in town. Yeah, the first priority there is to dispatch the fire department, also dispatch officers to the scene because it's going to be needed for traffic control and all the rest of it. EMS usually goes on standby, so you have to, you have to contact them. The problem is, we very often, I'd say the majority of the time, there's only one person working in the dispatch center. What, nobody else in town knows, and what, ADT calling from some call center in Cincinnati or Phoenix or wherever doesn't know that there's only one dispatcher working in Cheshire and there's something going on right now. So if Mrs. Smith hits her medical alert bracelet and, because she's fallen and she can't get up, that call comes in on a routine line. If there's a car accident at the other end of town on Route ten and four people call nine-one-one on their cell phones right away, all that starts ringing in the dispatch center. The firefighter... The firefighters start getting out to the scene and to the, to the firehouses, and they're, you know, letting people know what they're doing. The cops are arriving at the scene of the fire, they're being dispatched to other incidents. Somebody walks into the front lobby of the police station and says, is there somebody who could install my car seat, because I'm having a baby next week? And all that stuff has to be helped by what, probably eighty, 75 to 80% of the time, is the one person. Again, the thing that keeps me up at night a little bit, you know, is the fact that, so if, if multiple 911 calls come in, there's a process in place. It's all computerized. Our 911 calls, if our dispatcher's on a 911 call and can't answer the second one, after four rings, it rolls over to Wolkett. So some, a body will pick up that phone. Now, it might take a few extra minutes now, where they've gotta take the information, transfer it back to us, call us on the radio, call us on another line to let us know about the call that they received, but that 911 call will be answered. The routine lines that, you know, any resident in town might call on, even if it is an emergency. But primarily, your alarm companies that are calling, burglar alarms, fire alarms, any other, you know, medical alert, all those companies, they're in out-of-state call centers, they're calling the routine line that they have programmed in. That line, that, I can't guarantee that that line is going to get answered in the midst of all this. It doesn't roll over to anywhere else, it just rings. And my fear is that at some point, we're going to miss one of the, burglar, you miss a burglar alarm? Well, we all know, right? Ninety-nine point something percent of them are false. You know, if there's a 10-minute delayed response on that because the company had to call back, and, you know, I'm not gonna lose a lot of sleep over that. If somebody's pressed their medical alert button because they're having chest pains, and if there's a five, six, seven-minute delay on that, that could be, unfortunately, could be the difference between a successful outcome and not a successful outcome. The other problem is that these guys in the big red trucks throwing the water around, get going to buildings that are burning, and, and we don't always have somebody, we rarely have somebody dedicated to that incident. So if they, one of them gets into trouble inside a building, one of their fire officers is looking for mutual aid or more resources because, you know, it's the big one, again, the dispatchers aren't dedicated to the fire channel just because the fire department is out, even if they're out on a working call.
And protocol says that has to go to dispatch. In other words, Jack doesn't call up Wolkett. Jack calls up the dispatcher, and they call Wolkett?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Because they've got, I mean, they've got their handful.
Yeah, they're, they're hands full.
I thought we were going regionalizing dispatch. Whatever happened with all that initiative, the discussion a couple of years ago?
Yeah, we've had discussions about, about having a regional dispatch center with Wallingford, and then it was Wallingford and North Haven, and North Branford, and then it kind of-
Something happened to the-
Like, that's gone.
North Branford, it's, it's not completely dead, and not to, you know-
But the state has no funding for it?
Well, they've always claimed that they do. And there was money available that they, that they would give you. And there may, there may still be, because it's something that still comes up there. The issue that I think we ran into was, I don't think was really the logistical part, it was going to come down to a question of governance. How is that going to work?
Okay, I'm not in favor of that. I'm more in favor of supporting a Wolkett dispatch system than-
We discussed a lot, but-
Yeah.
But the reason, but the reason the question to me was important too, which I was gonna ask, chief, was that when we first started talking about that, one of the things that we talked about was that the number of 911 calls in town really had, had not been that high.
Right.
I won't say that they had decreased, but technically they have. So are we seeing that there is actual increase in the number of 911 calls, or is just the complexity of them, and that complexity had always been there, we just never discussed?
The complexity has always been there. I think there's been some, again, I don't, I know Jack State talked about this, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but the, the fact that the, you know, that maybe they're not able to put somebody at a dispatch position when they, when they used to be able to handle some of that routine stuff.
That's, that's part of it. But, but the people that we put in there, they're not, A, they're not trained, and they don't have the ability to enter the times, like when a fire truck signed on the air, the dispatcher in most cases would enter, truck signed on the air, and they would click and click it's approved. When they got there, they would click that it survived. Right now, we're not capturing those times. We're, we're listening to tapes, on spend, we're in order by the time, listening to the tape to try to get the actual times.
And that's part of that reporting, that's mandatory to the state, that you're-
Right, we can't falsely report, you know, we, we have to go back because we don't have the, that's why we're still here, because we are in 100% plus support of the additional dispatch.
You also want to make sure he was safe.
No, we've had lots of meetings here.
Chief, on page 17, where you actually have decision package with some information on dispatch. That's calling out for the cost of a dispatcher.
Yes. That doesn't mean I only want one.
And that's what I wanted to make clear.
Right.
So tell me how many more you wanna have.
Well, if you go to the next page after that-
Okay.
-there's a whole chart here about what other similar-sized towns. Again, we didn't do this. We, we asked PERMA, sorry, CCM.
Right.
So these are the towns that they, that they compare us to.
Yep.
You can see if, the right-hand, or the last column on the right with numbers in it is the number of sworn officers they have. So they're, they're all pretty similar to us. Madison has fewer cops than us, and New London has significantly more. But as far as full-time dispatchers, we are, with the exception of Ridgefield and Westport.
Yeah, Westport's really making up.
Right, but they, what they do in Westport is they-
They use cops.
Yeah, they, they just use cops. So every shift, there's a police officer assigned to the desk to act as the dispatchers, or as the dispatcher. And their fire department has its own dispatch center. So there's somebody sitting in their fire department 24 hours a day, seven days a week. 911 call rings at the police department, it's fire, it gets transferred to a fire dispatcher.
Who else has that arrange?
They have 64 cops.
Yeah, right.
Ridgefield has that also?
Yeah, yeah.
64 cops.
Yes, Ridgefield, Ridgefield is the other one.
Smaller population.
So, but you look at, you know, places like Branford and Farmington and East Haven, and, and Blastberry's a smidge of a different example, because they, they handle dispatch duties for East Hampton, which is a, you know, small rural town that kind of borders them. You know, we are by far, we're not that far, Sinnesbury only has seven.
So basically, you'd be, if you match them, you'd be doubling the ranks. But basically, do you have times in the day, you're probably gonna say, no, Tim, that's not the way it works. But are there times when you have to heavy up on a dispatcher based on experience versus the midnight shift? I mean, how's it work?
That's really the way it would, I mean, we could, we could do an in-depth study of calls for service, but traditionally, on our side of the house, police side of the house, although we're getting robbed blind, the car break-ins-
Right.
-the last couple of weeks. Traditionally, that's our slower time. So if there is a fire call on the midnight shift, it's less likely that we'll have other stuff going on that, you know, so our dispatcher, by the way, our civilian dispatcher on the midnight shift happens to be a member of the fire department, so he's pretty in tune with it-
Yep.
...and can handle it. The problem is that with only one dispatcher signing midnights, anytime he's on his regular day off rotation, it's a police officer off the street working there. And they might, they might only do it, you know, twice a month. You know, some of them like, some of them like to do it, so, you know, maybe you get somebody's like, oh, I'm, I'm here the next two days, and it's the dispatcher's next off, I'll take the desk both nights. But that, you know, that, that's another dynamic that plays into it. But sure, could we get away with assigning, you know, if we hired two more, so I mean, three on days and three on second shift? Again, it doesn't do away completely with the problem, because there's, it doesn't build in a relief factor. So if there's three working, one of them is always off. And then if there's, when somebody takes vacation, now that we're back to the same problem, we have two dispatchers to cover seven shifts over the course of a week, and the other one, you know, there's, on their other ones' regular days off, you're, you're back to the point where you've only got one. Would it cut down on the number of times that happen? But again, yes, it would. But again, to get back to my initial thing, there's no point having the extra body sitting at the dispatch center if they're all going to look at each other going, that's fire dispatch, and that's not our job. So we would have to negotiate with, with the union and find out what it is that they're looking for.
Just finished, we just settled in last year.
Yeah, yeah, we settled, yeah.
2020?
I think that is-
2020.
2020. They're willing to talk about it. I mean, we can request through, through, you know, the labor process that we reopen the contract to talk about that. It doesn't put us in a very advantageous position to open it, to look for something that we're looking for.
And the reason you feel it would have to be opened is because they have grounds to grieve it potentially because of some ambiguity and some ads that were placed, and how petitions were filled?
Yeah, even the, the job description talks about providing information on police matters and communicating on police radios, and it doesn't say anything, other than you initially dispatched.
It should be anything that comes over in 911 lines, anything.
Yeah. Well, yeah, yes, the 911 call, yes. They, they don't hang up on somebody if they say it's a fire. They dispatch the fire, but that's kind of where it, where it ended. And it's been that way for, I mean, that, that job description goes, I mean, you started as a dispatcher.
Correct, and it was always, I mean, again, to your point, 911 is the only thing that statutorily has to be answered by the dispatchers. Everything else is kind of second to the 911. Once, their stance is basically that once they dispatch the fire department, anything after that point on behalf of the fire department is a change in their working condition.
Again, that decision package is there to show you what the cost of firing, a first year cost for a dispatcher, but I am, and we're nowhere near ready to pull that, to pull the trigger on that, just because I think that has to be accomplished.
Well, that's important to know, because that's, that's sort of a different conversation. I-
Well, no, I mean, we talked about it. He said, you know, you can hire another person and have the same outcome, which is, you're not playing to deal with the issues that really need to be dealt with.
Or they'll deal with it because we ordered them to, but then they'll grieve it, and we'll, and then we don't control the process at all. Somebody comes back and says, you know-
Is there a gap in the coverage, or is there a community watching this video in the future, where covered from a public safety perspective?
We, we, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, there is somebody sitting in that dispatch center. And I never foresee a time when that will not happen.
And it'll be an officer, it has to be, just because we have five-
Yeah, because when-
Just because we have five dispatches, you could have 10 dispatches.
But we're back to the same thought process that we're paying a premium for that service that we could be paying a more of a market rate for.
Right, yeah. Thank you. The dispatch, the top paid dispatcher is significantly less than the top paid police officer.
Is this the monitoring police officers?
Yeah, I think they've picked up on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the question.
That's right.
So by and large, your biggest, your biggest conversation with us is really staffing?
Yeah. And initially, for right now, for your immediate consideration, again, based on what we heard from the community at those, at those meetings, I think, you know, we need, and again, I'm, I'm, look, I'm not telling you if you don't bring in the 49th officer, I'm not putting an SRO. We can have that conversation. But I just want, you know, again, six months before that conversation, we were having a conversation about opioids and, and, you know, the fact that we were having-
Which is true. But here's another piece of that, that presence in the schoolyard type of thing.
Right.
On a day-to-day basis, you have officers doing radar on mountain road, which we know they gotta do.
Yeah.
But that puts them, that puts them past an exit to Doolittle, exit to Norton.
Right.
Have you instituted a design in your, in your day-to-day staffing levels that incorporates now somebody stopping at the school?
So my-
That doesn't have to be negotiated.
Right. My colleagues at the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association came out with this, every school, every day, and, and Jeff Solan staffed, he was sick yesterday, but his staff and I met yesterday about it for the first time. So what it, basically what it entails is exactly what it sounds like. Every day, there will be a police officer who stops at every school. Not the same officer going around, but, you know, the, the, the west end car will stop at Darcy, central car will stop at Doolittle, the north car will stop at Chapman, that kind of a thing.
And that stop, does it walk through the building? Maybe, not that.
Can you, can we talk about this in executive session or something? I don't think you'd be talking to the public here, but our strategies and protocols are, if you don't mind, from my perspective, or maybe a private-
That's fine.
...discussion with the chief.
Just so, just so you know where that, that would be something we, we need to formalize and, and probably wouldn't start until the beginning of the next school year.
Right.
Because we need some time to, to set it up.
But there's some conversation.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Maybe not. You feel, you've addressed everything you need to address.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, my-
It's all in writing here, too.
Yeah, these are very helpful.
Statistics and-
And again, you know, this, a lot of this was revamped over the last couple of weeks after we had those meetings with, with folks from the community. And they seemed pretty, you know, I certainly not putting words in any of your mouth, but I know that there were some commitments to look deeply at the issue.
No questions.
There weren't, you know, commitments, oh, yes, we're definitely have the, the-
Right, but there may be other areas, other ways to get at part of this whole concept.
And they just, based on the, you know, the state's ongoing problems, when we first put this together, you know, I was hoping to get the 48th back, but I wasn't even thinking about the 49th. But it certainly would give me the flexibility to address two things that we have going right now, school security and, and that the drug, putting somebody with the drug task force.
Glad that question was asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Can I just add a couple of things, please? We have a plan on here for tonight. There's really nothing there in terms of any, so if you don't mind, I mean, unless you have questions.
And the fact that Bill's never showed up in 10 years, I figure.
Well, I didn't invite him.
You know.
I didn't invite him because his budget hasn't changed in 10 years. But I did wanna remind you, tomorrow night-
Well, he's never been invited in 10 years.
Tomorrow night, we start at 7:00, and we have a solid waste committee-
Some of us start at 6:30.
Right, we have a solid waste committee meeting at 6:30.
6:30 tomorrow.
6:30 tomorrow is solid waste committee, and then budget starts at 7:00.
I'm not gonna be here tomorrow.
Okay.
I won't be here tomorrow either.
Right.
I would be happy to take-
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I would be happy to spend time with you whenever you have to go over this. It's about a 10-minute summary of, of stuff that we've done to negotiate a successor agreement with A.J. Ways, which I think is, I think it's a good, it's a good-
Right, I know we talked about that in the, I think, wasn't projecting where we were and what, you know, holiday that it's, it's-
I'm sorry, yeah, and I think I messed up because of the Phil's isn't how it works.
Just any other question? Police chief is E5.
Didn't have a formal G5.
William inspector, E5.
No, no, he's E3, I think. It's, it's in here.
I tried 5 minutes.
Yeah, let me find it.
It's next to, it's with the, with each one of the department pages, Paul.
Yeah.
It lists what their, like, see here, their classification pages.
Yeah, no, I, I saw it for someone, but I was trying to-
Let me find it.
I see the fire chief's an E5, the police chief's an E5.